And with entertaining motion, if we exit executive session.
I'll second.
Have a motion, have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Most will pass. If I could get certification for the executive session, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify, to best of our knowledge, on public business matters lawfully presented from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters, such as, we're going to find a motion to go into executive session for heard, discussed, or considered in executive session.
Alright, thank you, sir. Do I have a motion that we certify the executive session?
I'll second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Mr. Zach Weege?
Yes.
Mr. Boss?
Yes.
Ms. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Compton?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And myself. Alright, this time if, uh... Mr. Rasnick would, uh... If they have a case, then we'll stand for the place for ladies, good please.
Let's bow to the word of our most kind and gracious heavenly father as we bow here tonight. We just want to thank you for the blessings of life that you have stowed on us. And we want to give you honor and praise tonight, Father, for being the God that you are. And we thank you so much for each one that's come out here tonight for this meeting. And we thank you for our school board and the great job that they do each and every day. And the dedication that each one of our employees has in supporting our students each and every day, that they might succeed and do the best in all that they do. Father, we ask you to be with each one here tonight as we conduct this business. And we ask you to keep us safe on our return home. And we'll give you the honor, the praise, and the glory. It's in your precious holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Brown, do you have any adjustments to the agenda this time?
Uh, we have one, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer an updating on the textbook task force and the work that they have done over the last month as an information part of it.
Alright, thank you, sir. Does the board have anything if they would like to make adjustments to the, to the agenda? If not, I'll take a motion at this time if we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Most will carry on the minutes. This time the approval of the minutes last month. This time I'll take a motion if we dispense with reading of those minutes if the board has had the opportunity to review them. Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. This time we'll take a motion to approve the minutes. Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Most will carry on the minutes. Dr. Brown, delegations on the agenda?
We had no communication, sir. However, there will be another opportunity at the end for individuals that may, uh... ...intend to write that is not confirmed.
Alright, thank you, sir. I think that takes us down to the recognitions, if that's correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fletcher?
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Mr. Chairman, the board, we do have a few recognitions tonight. First of all, you probably know, but if you don't, this is your month. It's School Board Appreciation Month. And we want to go on record as telling you how much we do appreciate you and the difficult job you do. We know many times it's a thankless job, but we appreciate the guidance that you give our school system. And Dr. Brown has some presentation certificates for you.
I'd like to say, Mr. Fletcher, we appreciate the food from Honeaker Elementary. I was trying to find out where it came from. It was excellent.
And the, the schools do that monthly in regard to school board appreciation.
Uh, would the board members like to come here or would it like to be presented there we stand?
Well, we are.
Okay.
We're not.
Stay on.
Mr. Boss, can you get a picture? Mr. Collins?
Sir.
Ms. Collins?
Thank you.
Mr. Good.
Dr. Brown. Ms. Carey.
Thank you, sir. Very good, very good. Alright.
Well, we do appreciate the work that the board members do. It is greatly appreciated, a thankless job at, at times. And I appreciate your patience in working with, with me and the staff here at the central office as we try to make things better for our students. Thank you.
We also have certificate for clerk of the board. February is also marked as School Board Clerk or Deputy clerk appreciation month. So, thank you. We appreciate the good job you do. Keep us up to date.
Again, it's a thankless job. Ms. Gilbert does that with no additional compensation. We appreciate her willingness to do such for the benefit of our kids.
Next, we have our Employee of the Month presentations tonight. Very pleased tonight for the support employee of the night. We have Mr. Mike Kletterbuch. I'd like to ask him and his family to come forward. And administrators from the schools, you will join. Mike is a little bit unusual in that I have this many recommendations, applications filed in supporting him. There are dozens here. And I'm not going to take the time to read them all. But I've just gone through and picked a couple. I've got the first one and I picked one in the middle. Uh, this is from a student. Says, "I would like to nominate Mike Kletterbuch, our janitor at Castlewood Elementary School. I believe he deserves the Employee of the Month award because he works without complaint, is dedicated, and even has pride in his work. I appreciate that he cleans the school tirelessly. He even comes on his own time because he cares about the students that much. I think he should be Employee of the Month because he's a local hero." And then another student recommendation I would like to rec, I would like to nominate, Mike Kletterbuch, our janitor at Castlewood Elementary School. "I believe he deserves to be Employee of the Month because Mike makes sure we are safe. Mike comes early to mow and weed eat so we won't get snakebited." "Mike is always coming back making sure the lights and the AC is working. Mike is just an awesome man." "Mike has worked for me before. He's a man of integrity and honesty. And I'm very happy that he's able to get this award." Dr. Brown.
Mike?
Absolutely, Mr. Fletcher. I agree with what they said. He's one of my favorite students.
Alright, for the Teacher of the Month, we have a nomination for Mr. Tracy Hall that has been selected as the Teacher Employee of the Month. I'd like to ask Mr. Hall to come forward if you have any family with you and any administrators. This recommendation came from a parent, so I'd like to leave what they've written about him. "Coach Hall has been our son's P.E. teacher at Lebanon Primary School for the past two years. He is also responsible for the school's morning and afternoon drive-by duty. At the start of each year, Coach Hall quickly learns each child's name. This is important as it makes children feel that they are not just a number and gives them a sense of security. During the morning drop-off, he greets children by name and often has small talk as they approach the school entrance. Coach Hall knows when someone is having a bad morning and has a way of making that child feel better. Our son is shy and there are mornings when he's nervous about attending school. Coach Hall has a way of getting to wipe away the tears and put a smile on his face. During visits to the school, we have noticed he exudes that same positive attitude with the students in the gym and hallways. In regards to drive-by duty, it is impressive how quickly Coach Hall learns who is picking up which child and the vehicle they drive. The drive-by pickup is extremely efficient, and that is due in a large part to Coach Hall. When he is absent, it is noticeable. We know that safety is a top priority for Coach Hall, and he conveys that to the other teachers and administrators that assist with his duty, as well as the children and parents. The afternoons are also filled with positive energy as he directs students to their rides and sends them off with playful banter. Coach Hall is most deserving of recognition." Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
One of the things I would add to that, you know, working with Coach Hall out, out there with the drop-off and the pickup. Those, those kids are really gravitating toward him. You know, a kid will, you get out of the vehicle and he'll say, "Did you bring me a biscuit?" Of course, we're talking about, you know, the little ones and they're, and they're like... You know, like, "I didn't know I was supposed to bring one," you know? But anyway, I am impressed, Mr. Hall. Alright, we do have student reports. Due to potential weather, our friends from Castlewood chose not to try to chance that. We do have Honeaker and Lebanon, and we'll have Castlewood at next month's meeting. So, I ask Ms. Hannibal to come forward and share what's going on with Honeaker High School.
Hello, my name is Hannibal, and I'm going to tell you everything that's been happening at HHS lately. Our winter sports are in full swing, and we have been very busy preparing for our upcoming spring events. Our JP and varsity basketball teams have had a very successful season thus far. Both of our varsity teams are top in the district. Our boys varsity team is fourteen and three, and our girls varsity team is thirteen and three. We recently have had major accomplishments for three of our players. Hartley Hilton, a senior, recently scored one thousand points during his varsity career. Brett Boyd, a junior, recently scored his two-hundredth three-pointer. Akyla Boyd, a freshman, set the girls' varsity three-point record with eight three-point field goals in a game. Also, our student and community attendance in Hannibal has increased this year. Tomorrow will be a big night at AP Baldwin Gymnasium as we have senior night and honor AP Baldwin during halftime. We would like to invite the school board members to attend this very special night. We are very excited to see how far our teams will go in the postseason. Our academic team is also having a very successful year. They are the Region 1D runner-ups and will be advancing to super regionals this weekend. The Tigers are looking for the chance to earn their third straight state tournament berth and a shot at the state championship. Aiden Cook, a sophomore, surpassed seven thousand career points. And Vicente Sox, an eighth grader, broke five hundred points in her rookie season. We are very proud of our wrestling team this year. The wrestling team has ten members, and three of those are girls. Two weeks ago, the team placed first at a tournament at Eastside. They've had a very successful season and are currently competing at regionals as we speak. Forensics is starting to grow at HHS. We currently have seven members on the team. These seven members will be competing in six categories. The team decided not to go back to districts, so the first competition will be regionals at RICO. Then the top three in each category will advance to super region. We wish those students the best of luck. Honeaker NFA has been preparing for upcoming competitions. They will have four members competing in anthropology, which is a study of horses, and six members in sockman's contest. They will be competing later this month at Virginia Tech. Our school is trying to prepare for everything coming up this spring. Our teachers have been attending professional development meetings in regard to new Virginia standards. Our FPLA advisors are helping our students to prepare and study for the competitions coming up later this month. We have also had several colleges visiting our graduating seniors. We would like to personally thank the school board for their help with the new gym floor lighting. These two improvements have greatly increased the quality of our gym. Our staff and coaches have received countless compliments on them. So, once again, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We would also like to mention that we now have twenty-seven point nine thousand views on our live video. Thank you for taking the time to listen to all HHS has been doing. I hope to see you all tomorrow night weather committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Hannah. Carey?
Good evening, Dr. Brown, board. I'm Carey Lambert, the student representative from Lebanon High School. And today I'll be sharing with you some of the recent drawings on Lebanon High School. The LHS marching band recently sent two representatives to Virginia Tech to be a part of their annual honors band program. There, the students auditioned at Tech and were those placed into the maroon band selection that played different styles of music from the other bands. And they put on a wonderful concert at the end of the weekend. Our scholastic bowl season recently came to a close for the pioneers. They were part of a three-way tie at their district tournament with a record of two and one, scoring a grand total of five hundred and seventy-five points there. And they'll soon be hosting their senior night match along with Virginia High in honor of their senior players. We recently had a player, Krista Potter, reach her three-thousandth career point, and two more players on the team are very close to their one-thousandth career points. Our after-school program is continuing to grow. Now, in addition to things like old-school gaming and cybersecurity, we're offering cooking classes and even yoga sessions. Our yoga program has yet to begin, but I was around to sample some of the cooking programs, confections, and I have to say they're doing a really good job. I know earlier we talked about School Board Appreciation Month, but here at Lebanon, we're also appreciating our wonderful administration. A large poster hanging up in one of the hallways for our students can sign our name and write messages for the, the administration expressing their appreciation. And everyone is being very responsive and very respectful in that. Our wrestling team is once again doing a great job this season, and both our girls' and boys' basketball teams have been doing exceptionally well as well. Our boys' team is currently one of the top-ranked in our district. And tonight's basketball game was meant to be the senior night for the senior members of the basketball, wrestling, and academic team programs along with the forensics program would be recognized for their participation, but due to the weather, this has been scheduled. Here shortly, the Pioneer Drama Program will be diving headfirst into their spring endeavors. They'll begin a new forensic season this Saturday at Castlewood High School, weather permitting. And they're also beginning work on their 2018 spring production, The Adventures of Tom Sawyer. The Lebanon High School choir will be sending eleven representatives to John Battle on February the ninth and the tenth for the all-district choir program, where the students will practice over the weekend to hold a district live choir concert. Auditions for all-state choir program are also held on these days. Lebanon High School is also hosting their third blood drive for the school year on February the nineteenth. And due to the large turnout at the previous two blood drives that we've held, we're actually getting two mobile buses here to help with this drive. So hopefully, we can have double the turnout and get double the amount of donations. Prom planning has officially started at LHS. This year, we've decided to hold a prom at high school, something that hasn't been done in a number of years. And though this is exciting, it's also proving to be quite the challenge. So, our senior engineering program has been tasked with designing a method to hang all decorations. If you're wondering what our engineering programs were up to this spring, it's helping with prom. So, those are all the things that have been happening recently at Lebanon. Of course, many more things have been going on. Our sports teams are doing amazing. Spring sports are gearing up to start. I know I've seen a lot of baseball and softball kids conditioning after school. Thank you.
It was one of the highlights of the board meeting. I love listening to what's going on at the other schools. It's great. This time it takes us down to bills and accounts as the board had the opportunity to review the accounts payable. Alright, if so, we'll take a motion to pay the bills as presented.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Pay the bills as presented. This time we're down to the approval of resignations and retirements.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I have this there, five individuals. We have our stepping aside, and the board's approved.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, have a motion to approve the resignation and retirement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Most will pass. New personnel transfers, Dr. Brown?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. A small list for the board to approve. Again, after-school programs and spring coaching assignments.
Thank you, sir. At this time, Chair entertain a motion. We approve the transfers, personnel, new hires as presented by Dr. Brown.
Take the motion.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Zach Weege. Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Most will carry on. Dr. Brown, I think that takes us down to the resolution on the small rural schools.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I actually, I have the board's consideration. During the 2017 General Assembly, funds were allocated to school divisions meeting the fact criteria for loss of enrollment due to the decline in coal and coal-related industry. This was due in part to school divisions coming together as a coalfield coalition to have a unified voice. The success of this coalition is a catalyst for the creation of the Small and Rural Schools Coalition. This coalition represents over seventy school divisions in various capacities attached as a resolution for the board members' consideration to formally add Russell County Public Schools to the official list of school divisions in the Small and Rural Schools Coalition. The purpose of the coalition is to have a unified voice as small and rural school divisions pursue fair funding for students and employees of our school divisions. And the recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is, again, approval as submitted. Now, I ask Mr. Fletcher to read the resolution, if you would, please.
Resolution to support the creation of a Small and Rural Schools Coalition. Whereas over eighty school divisions across the Commonwealth can be defined as rural and/or small, and whereas small and rural localities and stakeholders have determined that working collaboratively will enhance their collective voice in legislative and other matters, and whereas local stakeholders include school boards, board of supervisors, city councils, county councils, industrial development authorities, chambers of commerce, et cetera, and whereas small and rural stakeholders believe that pre-K-12 public education is critical to the vitality of their region and to the Commonwealth as a whole, and whereas rural school divisions have seen a decline in K-12 enrollment of almost eighteen thousand students since 2009, which represents a six percent decline, and whereas eighteen percent of the students in the rural school divisions live below the federal poverty level, and whereas fifty percent of the students in rural school divisions are eligible for free or reduced price lunch, and whereas the state's share for school operations has decreased by four point seven percent in rural school divisions since 2009, while the local share for operations has increased by four point three percent, and whereas these rural localities have the ability to raise only nineteen million four hundred sixty-nine five hundred thousand dollars by increasing property taxes by one penny, and whereas local poverty and tax revenues prevent rural localities from funding schools at the same level as affluent localities. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Russell County School Board that hereby support the creation of a Small and Rural School Division Coalition in order to better advocate for our students, teachers, staff, and stakeholders adopted this first day of February 2018.
Again, Mr. Chairman, the recommendation is, again, that... The staff recommended approval as submitted for the chairman to sign any necessary documentation associated with the Russell County Public Schools joining the Small and Rural Schools Coalition.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Brown. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion if we approve the Rural Schools Coalition.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Alright, Dr. Brown, I think that takes us to the information items.
Yes, sir. We have one that we added at the beginning of our meeting dealing with an update for board members on the test, textbook task force and the work that's been going on over the last six weeks with the, with the four groups. I'll ask Mr. Fletcher to share.
Dr. Brown, we have had a task force meeting at Dr. Brown's request to meet with the teachers of all grade levels in core areas of English, social studies, science, and math. And the question is in regard to the adoption of textbooks. Math and social studies is up for adoption. Of course, that's a fairly expensive proposition. And what we found by talking to those groups is that the high schools are getting really comfortable with open-source resources, things that they can find on the computer that aligns with the standards of learning. And with the Chromebooks, that's kind of the direction they've gone. So, we asked the question, "Do you need textbooks in every student's hand? Do you need just open-source materials? Do you need classroom sets of textbooks? What is the thing that will benefit you most as a teacher in the classroom so we can be good schools of the money?" The results, in a nutshell, and it wasn't unanimous, but democratic process of hand raising and voting, what we found was that all four core areas, English, math, science, and social studies, pre-K-three teachers felt like that their students needed printed matter in their hands, be that books or consumable worksheets, one or two. That was common across all four of the core areas. Grades four through seven in every area were really excited to ask for Chromebooks. I guess the, the success of that program in the high schools kind of let down, and they, they would like to see that happen at the middle level. So, if you throw that possibility in the mix, what we found out there was English and science, grades four through twelve, would like to have Chromebooks at every level and classroom set of books. Now, those two subjects are not up for adoption for another two or three years. So, that's a little ways down the road. But the math and science people, they aren't up for adoption. Four through seven all decided that they did not need textbooks, that they're comfortable with the materials that they've already gathered to teach those areas. And four through seven feel like if they had Chromebooks, that they would not need textbooks either. So, again, the result, pre-K-three in every subject area wants printed material. Science and English, we'd like that Chromebooks in middle school and classroom sets of textbook, of textbooks. And math, sorry, social studies, social studies and math, pre-K of four through twelve, feel like that all they need is Chromebooks. And we do not have Chromebooks in four through seven.
I mean, this, this is a big step for Russell County. And these are seven superintendent's meeting on Friday. I spoke to the other superintendents about this. And they're all interested in extending their Chromebook programs, but none of them are to the point where we are, where they're, you know, they, they think that they can do it. So, you know, again, it's very interesting. I had four superintendents afterwards come up to me and say that they're really excited about the idea and wanted to, you know, wanted to know how it goes and to keep them in the loop as far as the idea of us possibly doing this. You know, I guess a couple of things I'd want to point out to the board. Financially, the Chromebook is significantly more affordable than a textbook. For us to put a textbook in every student's hand, social studies for instance, textbook in every student's hand, it would be somewhere around two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. Okay? We can put Chromebooks in every seventh grader's hand for about seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars. And the great thing about the Chromebook is it's not subject-specific. Social studies books for social studies. Chromebook can be used for any curriculum. Chromebook can be used for any curriculum area. And Dr. Hooker visited, and some teachers, visited some schools in Kingsport, and they were just fascinated by kids, fourth graders, that were walking around, a junior's fourth grader, or a middle grader, walking around with Chromebooks. And it wasn't like it was a special thing, it was just part of it, it was a reflex. This is what we do, this is my Chromebook. It wasn't like they were carrying it around as something, you know, super special or what have you. And with the kids, let's just be honest, folks, technology doesn't scare kids. You know, listen, I'd be the first one to say when I've got problems with my cellphone, if I'm around my nineteen-year-old, I'll just hand it over and say, can you fix this? So, with that being shared, I'd like to explore the possibility of moving this idea forward and for Russell County Public Schools to be one of the first school divisions, or the first school division actually in Region Seven, to move the Chromebook operation and exposure to our students to the middle grades. Again, our teachers are excited about the opportunity, and for me, a teacher years and years and years ago, when we didn't have SOL assessments, we were extremely reliant on textbooks. We would open up and start on page one, and then we'd go to page two and three the next day, and we may get pages four, five, and six the day after that. But we would start for the most part and grind our way through the year covering as many pages as we could in that textbook. Why did we do it that way? Well, that textbook was approved by the Virginia Department of Education as meeting the requirements. The school division paid a lot of money for that textbook, so by golly, you better be using that textbook, okay? In this day and age, I think it's vastly different. Again, the open-source world that we live in now is just absolutely incredible, and the ability to go out on the internet and find instructional support, dealing with a particular SOL is readily available. So, with that being said, again, we're going to explore that with the board's permission, and we'll report back as we move forward with that. But on the funding side, the money that we get for textbooks is tied to textbooks. We can't use that money for personnel, we can't use that money for insurance. We'd love to, but we can't. This money that we get from the state for textbooks has a very tight list of things, and they've added Chromebooks and technology here in recent years. So, again, with that being said, we'd like to pursue this, explore this some more, and report back to the board at the coming months.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Board have any questions on this?
Yes, question, I have. Home folks to deal with this, because they're from the young. They would not have to have internet home to use his Chromebook.
No, the flexibility that exists now with the Chromebooks especially, is they can do partial download, full download at school before they go home if they have something in particular that they want to do.
And they can only that use it?
They pull it up, email it back to the teacher, and what happens is as soon as the Chromebook comes in range, here's lift, okay, Tim?
Yeah, as soon as it comes in range of one of these access points, it'll connect and send whatever is waiting to be sent.
Yeah, that's what that little white box is right there, is an internet connection for us. That's what's operating this machine right now.
And all of yours up there.
Yeah. So, again, it's a heaven opportunity, and I think just the financial side of it, I think it's going to drive school divisions to consider this more and more, because we're talking about if we were to do, let's say we do sixth and seventh grade, we could do that for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, it'd take two hundred fifty thousand to put one social studies textbook in every kid's hand. So, anyway, I want to share that with the board, let you know that we're reaching out to the teachers and listening to what they have to say, seeking their input, and we will move forward and report back.
Any other comments or questions by the board?
I have a question, but, consider, I think what you're talking about, Ray, I would like for you to, I know that you want to do up your teacher's seat in lower levels, but there's got to be something cheap out there for the smaller kids, that's sort of an introductory-type thing that don't really have a lot of lessons on it maybe, but just an introduction-type thing.
Oh, it'll definitely happen. There's a little bit of that going on already, the tech labs.
Just something you might want to look at.
Sure. And also, you've got to realize that all the mobile devices that Tim's been adding to our elementary schools, if we were to do fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh eventually, then all of those devices that we have purchased and are sitting in those rooms, those mobile labs, those four through seven kids wouldn't need them. So, now, those mobile labs would just be taken down to K-three and kind of create an environment where they have more opportunity, and again, just watch a three-year-old with an iPad or laptop. Incredible.
I'll find one, take a cell phone.
Anything further by the board?
I have one.
All right.
Listen, Tim's department, I mean, they'll be okay with about the extra technology, I mean, the end of the Chromebooks, I mean.
We did a lot of-
Is that a nice staff? I mean.
Well, we did a lot of work last year on improving the infrastructure, dealing with what we call the last mile, getting the fiber all the way to the endpoints. So, the ability that we have now compared to what we had two years ago is not even comparable. But that brings up a good question. You know, it's going to take some adjustments. We want to be, if we do this, we're talking about adding basically three hundred machines per grade level. So, you know, those machines are going to have to be inventoryed, programmed, and logged and so forth, so, yeah, there is some work associated with that. Kim, you want to jump in there on any of that?
Yeah, I mean, it would just, yeah, it would be, it would be a large number of new devices that we maintain.
But your staffing, I mean, your ad book probably-
Well, I-
He can work overtime.
They're spread pretty thin.
And he knows me anyway, he can work overtime.
Right, yeah. We've done a lot over the past few years that, I mean, the amount, if you think about grades eight through twelve with Chromebooks, all these access points, and basically, there's nowhere in Russell County schools now that you can go that there isn't Wi-Fi, but that's still a device that my department has to maintain and monitor and replace when it, you know, goes out.
Can I have a question?
We do the best we can with what we've got, but the more we add, the more-
I have a question. On these grants that you've been applying for, is those run out yet?
Yes, this was the last year. We're spending that money right now.
Okay.
For the security equipment.
We did get some money.
We got seventy-seven thousand, plus they added another six, we actually ended up at eighty, two or three thousand, it was about around six thousand or this.
We've done the math on it. We can keep up with the high school and explore the middle grades and still save money. Again, money is very, very detailed of what it can go for, but again, it would be cheaper for Russell County Public Schools to put Chromebooks in kids' hands than it would be to buy textbooks.
You need a motion on that?
No, it's just an information item, Mr. Vice Chair.
All right, anything else by the board? All right. Anything else, Dr. Brown?
No, sir.
All right. Our sales tax is three fifty-one, five thirty-six, sixty. Has the board had the opportunity to review the maintenance report? Any questions or comments on it? As is all going well with maintenance, I assume?
Yes, sir.
The lights in the gym are fantastic, by the way. I guess everyone's had the opportunity to see those, that is fantastic. Great job there, thank you. Expense report? Board have any comments or questions on the expense report? Dr. Brown, to you?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Future agenda items, the board have anything for future agenda? I know that Mr. Zach Weezer presents the governor's school next month, is one thing we will have. Anything else by the board? Yes, sir.
Dr. Brown, I don't know if he's still working on it, but the committee for the community college tuition-
ACE?
Yeah.
The ACE program?
It's still this sort of-
Well, with the turnover and such, we haven't had an opportunity to have a budget committee meeting yet to get the new members on board that are on budget committee or board supervisors, but I'm sure they'll be motivated by what they have to offer. I really can't speak to the situation with the county on what it's running and so forth. So, again, we'll plan to educate the budget committee on the ACE program, hopefully move that forward.
Okay. Any other future counter items? All right. Next board meeting is set for March the first, executive session beginning at five.
Mr. Chairman, remind you that we'll have our budget workshop on the fifteenth for board members, seeing what they're budgeting need and start the process.
All right, so we're going to have a team budget. Thank you. Anything further by the board? This time, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Ask someone?
Do have a second? Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, the same sign. Thank you.